Okay, before we call the meeting to order, as we all see, there can easily be feedback issues. If you mute yourself, I wanted to let you know you will not be able to unmute yourself. If you do mute yourself, you're going to have to wave at the screen. So Josh can see that you're wanting unmuted and you can speak. Please don't stay muted, Josh, if you can unmute Brandon. Because we're going to have to vote, and if you're muted, you obviously won't be able to do that. When we do roll calls, I have to see everyone. But right now, let's try to get through this without any more of those issues or interruptions. So at this point, I'm going to call the meeting to order. If everyone please stand for an opening prayer. Pledge of allegiance, Mr. Cameron, if you would.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, let's pray. Just thank you for this day, Lord, and just come to you tonight, Lord, and just ask your guidance. For the first and foremost, Lord, we just want to pray for the family of Officer, for the families, Officer Chris Walsh, Lord, in the Springfield Police Department, that also had their brothers last week, and for the other families that were affected by that tragedy. For all of our health and safety workers during this challenging time for our country, our area, Lord, pray for all of our public safety officials and all of our medical workers, and pray for wisdom and guidance for them. Lord, just pray for all of our local leaders, our federal leaders, our state government. Just be with us, Lord, and give us guidance and direction for all that everyone has to do and the decisions they have to make. Lord, just pray for your favor tonight on this meeting. If we try to do business in a completely different way, just be with us, guide us, help us to get through it. Guide and direct all we do and say tonight. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which is the best and one nation under God, indivisible, free, liberty, and justice for all. All right. This is certainly a new way of doing business and a lot of learning, so. At this point, I would like to open up citizen participation. Anyone who has joined us via Zoom, if you'll go down to the participants, click on that, and then you'll see an option to raise hand if you're a citizen. You're watching and you would like to speak. If you will click on the participants at the bottom and click on raise hand, Josh will let us know when he sees someone's hand raised. Okay, seeing none there, now we will move on to the phone. At this point, Josh is opening the phone line and unmuting all the phone lines. Are there any citizens who are on the phone who wish to speak to anything not on the agenda at this point? Anyone wishing to speak to anything not on the agenda? Seeing none, going to close citizen participation at this time, Josh, if you would please mute those phone lines. Moving on, I did a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda.
Motion.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries eight to zero on to board's commission committee schedule. The next city council meeting will be held April 7th. I'm assuming at this point it will be done this way with a little less interruption. And then we also have one following that April 21st. And we all hope that by then or sometime thereafter, we'll be person. Before we get into old business and tabled items, you all know that we added a, an agenda item to the list, which was a resolution, resolution number two zero dash R dash zero seven. Everyone should have had an opportunity to see that it was emailed. If you don't, let us know, we can put it up on the screen. If not, it's in your email. And the reason we're asking to add that without the normal 24 hour notice is because we had to act quickly after Green County had passed a stay home order. We wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to look at that and see what all was in it before we went on with this resolution. So before I can add that to the agenda, I'm going to need a motion and a second to add it to the agenda.
I'm Jerry.
I have a motion.
Hurley, second.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries eight to zero, will be added to the agenda and will be taken up in other business. Moving on to old business, tabled items. Ms. Poole, since I can't see you according to the decree general, I can't accept a roll call vote from you. So we are going to move on to, I need a motion and a second for the second reading of bill number two zero dash zero nine.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion will carry seven to zero. Laura?
In ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic Missouri, amending the municipal code of the city of Republic Missouri by amending title one, government code, chapter 130, municipal court, article two, court costs and fees regarding reimbursement for alcohol and drug related offenses.
Okay, we had a presentation at the last council meeting on all of these items, pretty much by Mr. Eisen. We also have Mr. Eisen available here for any questions, comments, or concerns from the council. Before we move on. Okay, need a motion and a second for final passage of bill number two zero dash zero nine.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second with no questions for Minister Eisen, roll call vote.
Councilmember Brashears.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Councilmember Self.
Aye.
Councilmember Dykman.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
That motion carries seven to zero. Moving on, need a motion and a second for the second reading of bill number two zero dash one zero. Motion. Have a motion by Mr. Franklin.
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Franklin and a second by Mr. Wilson. I know this is, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries seven to zero as well, Ms. Laura.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic Missouri, amending the municipal code of the city of Republic Missouri by amending title one, government code, chapter 100, general provisions, article three, penalty regarding court costs.
Thank you, I need a motion and a second for final passage of bill number two zero dash one zero.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Wilson and a second by Mr. Brashears. We have again Mr. Eisen available for any questions, comments, or concerns before we move on to a roll call vote. Looking at the council and seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilmember Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Dykman. Councilmember Dykman.
Aye.
Councilmember Brashears.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Councilmember Self.
Aye.
That motion carries seven to zero. I need a motion and a second for the second reading of bill number two zero dash one one.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries seven to zero, Ms. Laura, please.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic Missouri, amending the municipal code of the city of Republic Missouri by amending title one, government code, chapter 130, municipal court, article two, court costs and fees regarding court costs, fees, or court costs, excuse me.
Thank you, I need a motion and a second for final passage of bill number two zero dash one one.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second for final passage. Before we move on any further, I would like to turn to Eisen, he has an amendment to the bill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. After the first reading of this bill, the court discovered that in addition to this $7 surcharge that is required by the agreement that was reached with OSCA for show me courts, we would also need to collect an additional $3 surcharge for the sheriff's retirement fund. So in order to amend this bill to allow the collection of the additional $3, in addition to the $7, a motion needs to be made to amend this bill 20 dash 11 by amending section 130.250 subsection A to include a new subdivision 10 related to the sheriff's retirement fund.
Thank you, Mr. Eisen. As you've heard that amendment, I would ask if there's a motion and a second to amend the bill.
Motion.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Dykman, motion, Mr. Brashears, second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? That carries seven to zero. Now, we have any questions, comments, or concerns about the bill overall from Mr. Eisen before we move on to a roll call vote to approve the bill as amended? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Councilmember Self.
Aye.
Councilmember Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Russell, sorry. Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brashears.
Aye.
Councilmember Dykman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
That motion carries seven to zero. Need a motion and a second for the second reading of bill number two zero dash one two.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion by Mr. Wilson, was the second, Mr. Russell?
Me, Brandon.
That's yourself, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries seven to zero, Ms. Laura.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic Missouri, amending the municipal code of the city of Republic Missouri by amending title one, government code, chapter 105, elections, article one in general, and article two wards regarding elections.
Thank you, I need a motion and a second for final passage of bill number two zero dash one two.
Motion.
Second.
Who made the motion, I apologize?
Franklin.
Okay, Mr. Franklin on the motion, Mr. Brashears on the second. We have any questions, comments, or concerns for Mr. Eisen about this bill before we move on to a roll call vote? Seeing nothing from the council, roll call vote.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brashears.
Aye.
Councilmember Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Dykman.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Self.
Aye.
That motion carries seven to zero. And the last of the second readings and passages, need a motion and a second for the second reading of bill number two zero dash one three.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Dykman and a second from Mr. Wilson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven to zero, Ms. Laura.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic Missouri, approving the annexation of approximately 6.4 acres located at 830 West O'Neil and adjacent right of way, parcel ID 881730200002.
Thank you, I need a motion and a second for final passage of bill number two zero dash one three.
Motion.
A motion for Mr. Wilson, do I have a second? Mr. Dykman has the second. Do we have any questions for Ms. Haynes, who is also on the phone or on the conference about this bill before we move on to a roll call vote? Seeing nothing from the council, roll call vote.
Councilmember Russell.
Aye.
Councilmember Dykman.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilson.
Aye.
Councilmember Self.
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin.
Aye.
Councilmember Brashears.
Aye.
Councilmember Jones.
Aye.
That bill carries seven to zero. Moving on to new business, first read, need a motion and a second for the first reading of bill number two zero dash one four.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion for Mr. Brashears and a second for Mr. Wilson. Ms. Laura, or I'm sorry, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries seven to zero now, Ms. Laura.
An ordinance of the city council of the city of Republic Missouri, authorizing the execution of a cost apportionment agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for sidewalk and aesthetic improvements related to US 60 and Missouri 174 intersection improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now. As a part of the 174 and 60 improvements, we had asked MoDOT to consider connecting sidewalk from Heinz Street where it ends near Price Cutter to the new intersection improvements. And then on to the, on around the corner on 174 to connect to our highway 174 trail. This is not something that they were including in the original project, so we asked them to consider that as a, as a cost share agreement. The second part of that is, we asked them to consider the black powder coated signal poles. If you've been to the closest community I can think with those would be Ozark and their, their new portion of highway 14, but a little bit better visual appearance for the community. So we asked them to consider that. The sidewalk improvements included curb and gutter and some drainage improvements to the area in front of Orshlands and in front of the shopping center that has Little Caesar's and the subway. That portion, including the sidewalk, is estimated to be 169,000. And those black powder coated signal poles, the upgrade to black is estimated at 12,500. We're looking at funding this across a couple of different funds, utilizing stormwater funds that we, that we have in reserve for stormwater improvements, assist funds, and some street funds if necessary.
Okay, thank you, sir, any questions, comments, or concerns from the council? Okay, saying nothing, if you have any questions, comments, or concerns between now and the next meeting, please get with Mr. Nelson and ask for the question. Moving on to resolutions, resolution number two zero dash R dash zero six, the resolution of the city council of the city of Republic Missouri, authorizing payment to Missouri Rural Services, Services Workers Compensation Insurance Trust for coverage for 2020, 2021. Need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Dykman with the motion and Mr. Wilson with the second, Ms. Addington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, everyone. The renewal premium from the Missouri Rural Services Workers Compensation Insurance Trust for 2020, 2021 is 180,826. This estimated premium reflects an increase of 17,275 over our last year, 2019, 2020 premium. This increase is due to a few factors. The July 2019 work comp audit reflected a significant increase in our payroll numbers. This was due to an increase in actual positions, a wage increase, and then accurate appropriation of work comp code assignments due to our new software capabilities. We also saw an increase in our work comp claims for 2019, and there was a 1% across the board rate increase to keep up with the National Council on Compensation Loss. Given this increase, Missouri Rural, who is our current carrier, is providing a credit of 20%. This is an increase from the 15% credit they applied in 2019 due to a decrease in our fourth quarter claims and the safety measures. We did anticipate an increase in premiums for the 2020, 2021 year, and we did budget accordingly. However, just keeping in mind, we are still subject to our annual audit, which will occur late summer. So staff does recommend renewing our work comp premium with Missouri Rural.
Thank you, any questions, comments, or concerns from the council? Mr. Jones.
Are we looking closely at what was the workers' comp claims to go up in 2019?
Yes, we are. Some of that is because we did increase positions, but we have taken measures into place and actually Dwayne Compton and I just went to a safety training a few weeks ago. So there's definitely, we're definitely putting procedures into place.
Okay, what, what were the, I mean, were there a significant number? Was it merely an increase in frequency? Was there an increase in magnitude over the course of one year to the other, or what caused the jump?
It was both.
Okay.
Any other questions from the council?
Also, just from experience, the class code, changing that class code or correcting if some people were marked as clerical, but now they actually work out in the field, stuff like that will also cause rate changes as well, are part of it.
That was actually the most significant part of our rate increase was due to that payroll increase. Brandon's exactly right, our old software did not have the appropriate capabilities to assign those codes. We now have that with our new software. So that's where a significant, if not most, of the increase came from.
Want to be right, but on the bad side, it hurts for the rate.
Yes. Going forward, it'll be good.
Okay, any other questions, comments, or concerns from the council? They've seen none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries eight to zero, and I need to go back, Ms. Poole voted on the last 20, the first read of the ordinance two zero one four, so that was an eight to zero, not a seven to zero vote on the first read. Moving on to the last item. Sorry, let me get to it because it was an addition and I don't have it right in front of me. It is resolution number two zero dash R dash zero seven, a resolution of the city council of the city of Republic Missouri, supporting the advice and direction of federal, state, and local officials related to COVID-19 and encouraging the citizens of Republic to follow those preventative measures. Need a motion and a second.
Motion.
Second.
Have a motion from Mr. Wilson, and I think Mr. Brashears had a second. Mr. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we sent this out late today and obviously I've added it to the agenda tonight. What I'd tell you is the mayor and I probably started working on this. We started getting phone calls prior over the weekend trying to work wondering and just getting information what was going on throughout the county, the state, federal government, what, what changes were being made, what could be coming down. Because we just want to stay in the contact of what was going on. Because from the beginning of this, that's from the onset, we've kind of taken a position, we have a position to follow the leadership at the national and state and local levels. And so an effort not to confuse it, we are a charter city, which gives us our own constitutional powers per se, but at the same time staying somewhat in solidarity of what's going on at all levels. But there were multiple messages coming out from different agencies. And so what we wanted to do and what we implemented in the city is we followed those guidelines to keep it clear and concise. We did not create our own, and we have not created our own. What we've done is when the county's adopted, I believe it was late or early next last week, they adopted an order that included the city of Republic. Again, this afternoon around 3:30, they approved another order that also included the city of Republic. And so in an effort just to show support with the advice that's being handed out for limiting congregations of 10 or more, social distancing, this resolution was, was developed. And the why it came late is we received a final order around 2 o'clock this afternoon. I worked very diligently to get this prepared so that it would be before you tonight. It was not an emergency, we've been working on it, preparing for it. We just needed the final language coming out to understand what we were, what we were getting behind. And so again, encouraging our community, and we're seeing it in our community, to follow the guidelines that have been provided. If you, and we will release the, the order county has provided, you will find in attachment A in those orders that there is a, a number of essential function. One thing that I can tell you is we go around the community, you can see it in our businesses and our community, took heed, they begin to take those steps. You see the social distancing, you see businesses doing takeout orders and things of that nature. What we're doing is we're just coming alongside that and basically for these recently enacted orders. And that's kind of what we're bringing to you before, instead of us creating our own, coming alongside that, because it would just create confusion in the community if we, the city, created our own restrictions.
Yeah, and I want to add to something to that real quick, David, just the fact that there are so many orders and going around from the federal, state, local levels, whatever they may be. We, you know, you'll see in that resolution that what we're doing is encouraging citizens to be responsible and to travel themselves, for them to decide whether or not what they're traveling is a necessity. We didn't want to keep piling orders on top of orders on top of orders. And the other thing I would tell you, what that does in some cases is takes the power away from the representative government, which is the city council, and invests that power in a singular person. And I couldn't disagree with doing that more. I'm not being critical of anyone who has done it. I'm just telling you that I had no, I didn't want to do it. I wanted to make sure that any decisions were made by this council. And whether that be getting together for a special meeting and having a vote. And that's why we're to this point where the resolution is before you now as a council, not a state of emergency. I think it's important for everyone to know also in the community that we haven't, we're not aware of any people in the city of Republic with COVID-19. And I know there are some privacy issues with the health department releasing the addresses of folks who have it. But we assume that we would be contacted if someone from the community had it, and we've not seen that. So another part of the charter, to issue an emergency, you have to have an emergency. And at this point, while we would never tell people not to follow the advice of those who are trying to keep them from getting ill, we just wanted to make sure that we streamlined it, didn't add orders, didn't create confusion. And that's why you, the ordinance you see before you today, or the resolution, I apologize. But at this point, I'm going to open it up to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a question.
Sir.
With the, the ordinance that I've seen so far in Springfield, it carried with it a penalty for anyone who disobeyed the order. With this resolution, does it carry with it any civil penalty?
No, there's nothing in this resolution. Not from the city. Now, obviously, the people who, so I want to talk about, let's just talk about restaurants. While we didn't tell restaurants they had to shut down or they had to go to drive through a curbside pickup. First off, we have a bunch of responsible business owners that saw what was going on and just did it. We didn't have to tell them to do it, thankfully, in the Republic, blessed with that. But secondly, you talk about a restaurant, I mean, really, the Green County Health Department issues permits to operate a restaurant. We issue business licenses, but we don't issue a permit, a health permit. We don't have a health department, which is really, per statute, you know, the, the director of health and senior services at the, well, can do these things in a pandemic. And that also bleeds down to the health departments locally. We don't have a health department, so we're relying on the information and expertise from those that do. But we have nothing in this resolution that says we would write tickets or we would arrest people. There's, there's no penalties in this resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the council? Okay, seeing nothing, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? That motion carries eight to zero. We will not have a finance report tonight, we're, we're not required to have one tonight. And it just wouldn't have worked out, so I think you've all gotten that in your email, though. We know she continues to do a lot of good work for the city on the finance side. And we'll move on to reports from staff and Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you for mentioning the work of the finance. Everyone got a financial report, we're also going to post that online for those that want to see it as well. Again, I just want to start my admin report tonight with our thoughts and condolences to the family of Officer Walsh in the Springfield PD. Officer lives last week in that tragedy. It was just, it was great to see our community and the community as a region come out and support that family. It's very difficult, you know, when people ask, this individual ran to the situation and put his life in line. So just a lot of thoughts and prayers go out to that family on behalf of our community. I want to communicate to you Uh, I want to communicate, uh, to you, to the council, to the community, and myself, your mayor, and the staff, even the council, we've been extremely busy over the last several days. Not leading from behind, but leading in front of this, uh, communicating, uh, quite a bit over the weekend, late into the evenings. Uh, just communicating and making sure we're doing the best job we possibly can to create a clear and concise message. Not want to panic, but want to resolve, and staying in concert with what the federal government, the state government, our local leaders are doing. Um, we want to be consistent with that. We began planning weeks ago and having discussions. We began discussing, what if we shut the court down? What if we had to shut the community center down? So we began to put those, those provisions in place. Um, and that, we began to send out information to the community just to stay in, in touch with it, because that information changes not only daily, but hourly. And so, we're going to continue to do our very best, uh, to present information in a timely fashion. Uh, but it comes to us sometimes, it changes. And like just today, I think we spent three or four hours just on the ever evolving, changing pieces that keep coming down, what information's going to come down. And everyone's paying attention to what the president's saying, uh, what, what state leaders are saying. And there's press conferences all the time, so we're just trying to provide one message once we hear it, compile it, and provide it. Our, and our path forward remains consistent, and we're going to continue to do that. As the information comes to us, uh, like this resolution we just passed, if we find out in two weeks or three weeks that we need to revisit it before the thirty days, we'll do that. Well, we just want to be consistent with what our leaders are asking us to do. Uh, I want, I just want to give a shout out to our staff. They prepared those sixty-five hundred letters. They hand stuffed them on a Thursday. I asked them, we needed information out. We knew that not everyone was getting social media pages. So they all came together and stuffed sixty-five hundred envelopes to send those mailers out. We're trying to get that information out in timely fashion, but I want to thank the community. We asked for people to go online to pay their bills, and what I think appeared to be that is we had an additional one hundred and thirty-three people sign up, uh, to do online bill pay. Also, this week, I believe Debbie, uh, came, uh, reported to me today that the billing office working through our software is now able to take utility bill payments online automated. So basically, before you'd have to talk to somebody, now it's kind of like paying your car payment online or on the phone. You can call in, pay your payments. So we're trying to create more and more ways to create our own social distancing during this time, but still keep our residents with the opportunity to pay their bills. Obviously, one of the provisions we put into place is we're not doing shut offs. We're allowing people that, if, come in to make their payment, we'll work with them on their payments as we move forward. Um, but I will also say, what, what, as the mayor mentioned also, when it comes down to not only utility billing, but our financial position, all of our financial positions have been working remotely from home. They've been able to keep all the business of the community moving forward. All, and I, and I would tell you this, that all the secondary protocol, all the accountability and secondary measures for signatures and accountability, making sure fiscal policy is in control or in place. We're able to approve all expenditures online. The mayor and I both can, but they're all being sent to us from remote, remote locations from people's homes. And so, from a, from a standpoint of our mobile operations, we've had probably two or three people at city hall, uh, at most. But we're able, most people are able to work remotely, so they, I appreciate the work that they're, they're continuing to do. But thank you to our community for stepping up, even to our local businesses for doing their, their own, their own part. Uh, the Casey's this morning, I don't want to just, uh, everyone's doing it, but you're just seeing people taking all the measures, distancing from, from one another and taking those steps on their own. And so, I just appreciate the resolve of our community to do the, to do these things and our businesses. Again, it's important that we get out and support, support our local businesses to, you know, call in, to take out orders. I know they'd appreciate it. I know they appreciate it now. They're offering different things, but just thank you to all of our businesses that are, that are doing their part. We will continue to push information out on our webs, on our, on our webpage, um, to the community. Uh, as things become available, uh, we'll continue to send it to you. Uh, I just thank you for your support. Uh, we've had to do things we've had to do it through, uh, Zoom. Thankful for Zoom. Uh, and I thank you for your cooperation. Uh, I want to thank the staff that has tirelessly to make this event happen. At first, I was a little bit worried tonight we started, because we've been on this thing both yesterday and about four or five hours today testing. So whenever all this stuff started happening in repeat, we're like, what just happened? So, uh, anyway, I think staff, everybody that's been a part of it, everyone that's just, uh, has helped make this production happen tonight. To the mayor and the council, I thank you for your leadership. Uh, I'll tell you that Jeff and I, um, have been on the phone a lot. And I will tell you, and we, we've been keeping in contact with council, just keeping everybody up to date, but, um, and your mayor has kept us calm and is cool, and he's been a, a great, uh, person for me to work with, and we have worked closely together. Resolved and confident. And, um, that means a lot during these times. It's important for us to all work together. It's not a time for us to throw stones, and I'm telling you, while we've, uh, we've worked very well together. And that's just stuff I want to report to the community, to the staff, is that we're just fortunate the way we're working and how we're functioning. And, uh, we're going to continue to move through, and we're going to grow this stronger. And so, this, um, this production or whatever you want to call it tonight, uh, just shows the resolve and the work that's going on, and I just thank you for, uh, but you built, I just thank you for the privilege to serve the community and to lead during this time. And so, uh, we're going to get through it. It's going to take all this, continue to adhere and apply those principles that are being that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. I just, I want to point out that, uh, Josh and staff have done an amazing job with this. I know that some other cities have tried to do this, and I know ours got off to a little bit of a, a bad start, just because we hadn't tried to do the live streaming with everybody involved. But I, I think the, the proof is in the fact that he had it fixed within a couple of minutes, and we were back online and having our meeting. So the staff's just been amazing. David's done great through this entire process, and I thank the council, you know, uh, I have fielded a ton of calls, um, as you've probably seen, that to ease the fears of people, I'm trying to take all those calls. I'm trying to return every phone call that I get, even though some days it seems like an insurmountable hill to climb. But, you know, we're not, we don't have the National Guard roam in the streets in Republic, and now we're not rationing things, we're not stopping cars that are out driving on the roads because they're not supposed to be out. We don't have a curfew. Those, those things that get started in, within the rumor mill and usually on social media, it's just so important for us to keep reminding those folks that we represent, that, you know, we, we're all here as citizens. I mean, we're, we're not getting paid a ton of money to do this. We're doing it because we love our community, and I don't think anybody on this screen would ever take an action or do anything that they think would hurt the people that they represent or their neighbors or friends and family. So uh, I know from my perspective, this has been a powerful learning experience, uh, juggling a full-time job with what's been going on lately has been, has led me to understand just how gracious or grateful we are to have people like David and Lisa and Jared and everybody that's, and Laura, everybody. I can't name everybody, but it's all of our staff that take that, take that load on and carry it on their backs every day. So I'm going to open it up to the council real quick and, uh, see what you all have to say. Let's start it, because it, everybody can talk at once, as we saw. Um, if you'd like to say something, I'm just going to ask you to throw your hand up so I can follow you. Mr. Franklin?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I would just like to thank, uh, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Cameron, all of the Republic personnel that, uh, have been working to respond to the coronavirus crisis. Uh, I know this is an event that's been filled with uncertainty, and we appreciate all of the additional effort that's been put forward. Um, I'm very honored and proud to live in a city that responds the way Republic has responded. And so, I would just like to say thank you to everyone and all of the additional efforts.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to say anything? Have anything?
I'll say, you know, to my fellow, to my fellow, uh, small business owners here in town, um, just like what Mr. Cameron said, you know, well, I'll get through it. I appreciate everybody shopping local. Um, you're eating, you're taking out, you know, going into Springfield. Every dollar counts now. Um, not that it didn't before, but truly, everybody taking, taking that takeout order, uh, locally is, is crucial. So, thank you to everybody.
Absolutely. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Cameron?
Yeah, I might add, with the extension that the county has put out, it is likely where we convene as a staff tomorrow and probably most likely extend, um, our suspension of our services that we have that have been in, in concert with those, those positions. So just be, uh, just, I want to know that we, we will be considering of the guidance that has come out, uh, for our facilities, at the courts. And, uh, I know the courts have extended theirs to April fourteenth, and so I'm sure that there'll be continued more guidance about whether we should close or suspend the use of those facilities, but there'll be more, there'll be more information coming out about that, because those are set to expire, I believe, April second. That's all I have.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing, nothing else from the council, um, just bear in mind that it's likely we will do this again on April, uh, seventh. Uh, we'll probably do another Zoom meeting just to be safe. And I know the, the order precludes us so that we could gather, but from talking to Mr. Cameron, we, we really believed that the responsible thing was for us not to ask citizens to come and congregate in a small room like council chambers are. So bear with us and understand that the reason we're doing it is we want to be responsible, just like we're asking our citizens to be. So thank you all for, uh, I don't guess, can't say thank you for showing up. Thank you for being online with us tonight. And, uh, if you have any questions or anything, let us know, and we'll be happy to take care of those. And please keep your constituents, uh, calm and let them know that we're doing everything we can to take care of them, okay? All right, thank you all. We're going to adjourn the meeting right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.